Hello Wakefield, I am calling our Town Council meeting of January 9th, 2023 to order. Can we all join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, I am joined by all my fellow councilors, so we have 100% attendance rate. Moving on to item for public engagement, Sherri, do we have anyone for public comment in the virtual world?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. We do have a commissioner, an HRC commissioner, I'm going to bring up over right now.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, Chalisa, can you hear us?
How's it going? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Hi. Thank you so much for giving me the time, just wanted to encourage everybody and invite everybody to our event on Monday, January 16th at 10:00 a.m., we're actually going to be having a live event this year for the MLK and Coretta Scott King Day event. So we're very excited, we haven't done this in a couple of years now, so we're really looking forward to seeing people again in our event. We're going to have some dance groups, some youth participate, we are going to be taking donations for the food pantry as well that day, and we are planning on having a volunteer event that is going to be coming up too, but we're going to be signing up people and we'll have more details to share hopefully that day. So we encourage people to attend, and if they have any questions, you can always reach out to us via email, Facebook, anywhere you like, we are available, so we're really looking forward to this event and we hope to see you all there.
Thank you, is there, WACT, is there a flyer that we could just share for a moment? And just to, oh, great, it's being shared, thank you. It is, just to repeat what Chalisa said, it is Monday, January 16th at 10:00 a.m. at the Galvin Middle School. More information on Facebook and the website, the town's website, there's also a coloring contest, I believe.
Yep, that's correct, yep.
So, so I would encourage people to check out the event, it is a great event and really excited that it is back in person after a couple of years in the virtual world.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Any of my councilors have anything to add?
Just glad that it's back in person, it's a great event and so looking forward to it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sherri, is there anyone else in the virtual world?
No one else virtually.
Okay, great, and so we have someone in studio. I'd ask that you come up and have a seat at the microphone. If you could introduce yourself with your name and your address, and just a reminder that there's three minutes for public comment, I believe, our town administrator may set an alarm, and feel free to talk about whatever you'd like to talk about.
Sure, my name's Marie Olivera and I live at 216 Hart Street. I have one big issue I'd like to bring up. I know we have two elections coming up, one to vote on the high school and then our usual election in April. I'm wondering why both of those can't be combined, especially with March being a treacherous month for weather, and a lot of people away, so I think to get a true reflection of how the town feels about the high school and a lot of the other issues is to make sure that the vote for the high school takes place in April and not March. I think it's really excludes, as I said, a lot of people who are traveling or away or can't make it because of any inclement weather. So that was my first item, so do you folks control that, is that likely, will you give that consideration?
So we, we don't normally have a back and forth right now, but the town meeting is on, is on our agenda, and you will get an explanation of why we have to have it on those separate days. I believe our town council and our town administrator will explain, we actually have a certain number of days that we have to have it in between, and so we're, we're at the, we have to do it for the timeline, but they'll explain further in the agenda on that.
Because it even would make more sense, given the inconvenience that it causes, the, the school and all of that, to have both on one day. So then my next item is, I plan to be voting for the high school, you know, one, one way or the other, but I think it would behoove the town, since we now have an educational complex and a huge campus going in, considering the Vogh School, the parking lots, the fields, and the energy park, I want to see the whole thing. I don't want to see it in piecemeal, and I don't think it's fair to the town to make a presentation that, that doesn't include the whole thing. So that's my feeling, I've talked to other people in the town and they all feel the same way. It's been a very piecemeal project, and I understand the reason for that, but I think at this point in time, it really, it really needs to be brought together so that people can vote based on having the whole picture. So, is, who's, who could put that together, what committees do that, should I have to go to another committee, you know, before the 28th to make sure, because I've gone to meetings and the technology's not working, so, you know, you don't even get a picture of what's available, what's going on. So, can you folks take that as an action item, or do I need to go before someone else?
So we are, we are the people who, who help organize town meeting, and I believe as it's on the agenda, we will take that into consideration in a little bit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No one else, Sherri?
No, that's it, Madam Chair.
Great, okay, item five, special town meeting. Did anyone submit any additional warrants for our January 28th town meeting?
No, I can answer that, Madam Chair, no, that's it, the, it is just the, the sole issue, the high school project.
Great, and, and do you mind, Steve, now, just kind of explaining the timeline?
Not at all, I would say we, we have millions of reasons why we have to do it this way. When the school, when the Massachusetts School Building Authority approves a school project, which they did in December, the town has, excuse me, 120 calendar days to approve the financing for the project. And because this is a debt exclusion, meaning an override of two and a half for a temporary period of time, there's a two-pronged approach, one of which is a special town meeting, which will be on January 28th at nine o'clock at the school right here, the field house at the high school, and assuming that that's positive, we will then have to have a separate election. That election needs to be, I believe, councillor, 35 days after we set it as a minimum. We couldn't do it the same day as the April election, because the state, they're too, there's too much room per charter. So that's the reason why they are, just like with the Galvin School, we had to have a separate election there as well, so that's the reason for that. As far as the projects are concerned, the Vogh Project and the, and the town project are completely separate. The state views them separately, the School Building Authority views them separately. I understand what your point is about maybe seeing them together, and we can try to see how we can do something with that, but they are completely separate projects that stand on their own.
Yeah, I understand that, but I think it's critical, since you didn't have gray pot in this whole area, for everyone to see, you know, the parking lots and the fields and, and all, all that's involved and all of that.
And, so, so Steve, I, I do think the consideration of some, of some maps that show the battery park, the parking lot, I think that actually would be really helpful, I don't know if they exist, but I do think that was a good suggestion, not that the, the two projects are completely two different projects at different, different ways on the timeline, but I think the maps, kind of aerial views or drawings would be really helpful.
Yep, we can do that.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, so do we have to take a vote?
Yes, you need to take a vote to, to approve the warrant, yes.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second. Great, and any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Great, seven zero. Item six, moving to the fiscal year 2024 budgets.
Okay, I know that Sherri's going to bring over Kevin, but while we wait to bring him on, Kevin's over right now.
Mm-hmm.
And Sherri, do we have anyone from the Finance Committee on as well?
No, we don't.
Okay.
No.
Um, we do actually have Ed Bean on stage.
Oh, okay, Ed is not on this subcommittee, he's welcome, yeah.
He's not part, right.
Yeah.
Hi Kevin.
Hi Sherri. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, so, I guess we'll go through the budgets, starting with budget number two.
Sure, I'll, I'll give a very, very brief overview. Thank you to Kevin for putting our first round together, start our budget odyssey for fiscal year 24. I think we have eight to 10 meetings just on budget, and I, I think the way that our town handles it is we do go through each budget, at least at the town council level, on a very persnickety level, I guess we could say, we go line by line, and I think that's part of our success, it makes us all have much better and cleaner budgets, and it's, it's indicated in our AAA bond rating and what have you. The first group of budgets are, I call them pretty benign, mainly town hall departments and/or committees. Kevin did a great job putting them together, and the combined total of these are an increase of, I think, 1.96 over last year, if I'm not mistaken, which is really a little bit below our threshold that we were striving for, so we always try to bring those in a little bit lower, and Kevin will go through line by line or department by department, starting with the accounting budget. I would ask that, let Kevin make his very brief presentation on each budget and then have questions, and we should vote if the town council is inclined to vote each budget separately, Madam Chair, so, thank you.
All set?
All set. Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, the first budget we'll start off with tonight is the accounting budget. We're recommending that this budget be increased $12,885. This breaks down $12,055 coming from the tax levy and $830 coming from a water and sewer transfer. There is an increase in personal services, $12,895, which is for contractual negotiated increases. There are several small decreases under the expense side. Under contractual services, we reduced both the tuition and the travel line item, a total of $750, and then a small decrease for supplies of $90. Main expenses within this budget, there was a $28,000 line item for equipment rental. This is for seven coffee machines and two ice cream printers located throughout town hall. There is a $60,000 line item for professional services. This is for the town audit, we use a local firm, Powers &amp; Sullivan, they're up at the Head of the Lake, they've been doing the audit for the past probably five, maybe almost 10 years, they, they do an excellent job for us. And the postage line item, $8,000, which is used to mail the accounts payable checks. The total budget request for fiscal '24 is $475,984, with $453,450 coming from tax levy, and $22,534 coming from a water and sewer transfer. With that, if there are any questions on the accounting budget.
Any questions on the accounting budget, Councillor Dubrowski?
Thank you, Kevin, for this, and thank you for sticking within the 1.9% increase to. Certainly, I, I had a few questions about the actual spend midway through on actually four, four of the line items. So the first is equipment rental, so as of the end of last year, we only spent $9,500, but we, we've budgeted $28,000, is, it feels like more than a timing issue, right, or how does that come about?
There, there is a lag of one month, so the December bill probably is, is not in that number. So that number, come July, we would be paying the June bill on one of our last warrants, so it, it does work out. There is probably a little bit of extra, maybe a thousand or two extra in there, just in case if usage goes up on our coffee issues.
Okay, and then similarly with the audit, I noticed that we're, we're only at $17,000 midway through the year, but obviously the budget is considerably more than that, could you maybe speak to why we have that delta?
Yes, that's, that's a timing issue, when they come out and do the preliminary work, we, we pay the first installment, which is the $17,000. Once the audit is finalized and complete, which is, they're in the process of doing now, we, we pay the balance off.
So it's standard, the second half of fiscal year is when the bulk of that expense is incurred or paid?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, and then finally, just for postage and telephone, I realize they're not huge numbers, but in both cases, it seemed like postage, we seem to be not at the midway point, although we budgeted $8,000 and, in terms of actual spend for, for this fiscal year, and telephone seems like we're, we've already maxed where we would be, so is that, are these timing issues too, or how do they break down?
Yes, on the postage, it is, is probably the month of December, is not in that 29,000, I'm sorry, 2,0953, so we're probably one month short, that we'll get that bill in January and pay it. And for the telephone, we pay it once a year, and that's been paid, so there will be no more payments for that.
Got it, perfect, thank you, I appreciate your work on this, thank you.
Councillor Tynes?
Good, just a quick question, thank you Kevin, this is great and very well put together. I apologize if I asked this last time and have forgotten, but you, you mentioned we've kind of worked with the same auditor for the last five to 10 years. Do we bring that out to bid periodically, or, you know, how, how does that work in terms of, you know, sort of assessing whether we continue with the firm going forward or, or make a change at some point? And this is not to suggest that they don't do a great job, I think they do, but just asking from a standpoint of, you know, kind of appropriate fiscal controls and, and so forth.
That is something we can, we can look, put out to bid in the future. It is a specialized, municipal accounting is a very specialized piece, and this, this company, Powers &amp; Sullivan, they handle a vast majority of the communities in Massachusetts.
Okay.
We found them very helpful whenever we have issues or we need to clear something with the Department of Revenue, Powers &amp; Sullivan has always come in and, you know, been by our sides whenever we've had issues, so, they are a great resource.
Okay, great, no, and, and again, not asking to suggest that they aren't a great resource at all, I know, you know, we've had kind of a good experience with them, at least in the time that I've, you know, been involved on town, town council and FinCom, so, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Anyone else, Councillor Dubrowski?
I would just have one other just general point, Mr. Mayland, looking at these budgets generally, I, I really like the fact that we're going with a local firm, and while I don't think that we should be paying, you know, premiums to go with local firms, I do think that, you know, all things being equal or nearly equal, any opportunity that any department can go with, and we talked about it, I know with Snowcon, for instance, things like that, I think it really helps us locally, you know, it helps our, our local residents and local businesses to be able to do that, so I don't, I, I'm not trying to establish a policy here for that, but I do think a practice should be that, whenever possible, when departments are looking for outside vendors, and, and I'm not saying we don't do that already, obviously we do, you know, with, with Powers &amp; Sullivan, I know, but it just feels better to be keeping the money within our own community.
Thank you, yeah, we do, that's what we try to do, yep.
Great, before we take a vote on this, can we just take a step back, I realized we have two newer council members, and we actually have people probably watching, Steve, can you just talk a little bit about the timeline? So, so you and your team, you and Kevin, have kind of worked on these budgets, that'll start July 1st, so we're gearing up to vote at it at our spring town council, or town meeting.
Correct.
And after we, we vote on these today, they'll go to FinCom, correct?
Correct.
And so, and so there's what, about 40 different budgets?
Yeah, 40 plus, I guess, 40 plus budgets, and, and each one is vetted by a subcommittee at, well, let me, let me step back.
Yeah.
Kevin and I will meet with the department heads, starts November, December, I guess.
Yeah.
We're, we're reviewing budgets all the time, it seems, November, December, to see, you know, what the needs are, what have we noticed in trends, what's going on. We then, Kevin then compiles the budget, it goes to the department head, goes to me, it is also reviewed by a Finance Committee Subcommittee, town council votes on it, and then Finance Committee, it reviews all budgets, again separately, and makes a recommendation at town meeting, and ultimately, the budget is voted normally as Article One in our spring town meeting, neither April nor May. So it goes through this long odyssey, and I think I said we're going to start our budget odyssey today, goes through this long odyssey, and ultimately is voted on by town meeting, by the population, by the citizens of town meeting. And it takes, you know, here we are in January, takes five months, you know, four or five months to get to that point.
Thank you, I just wanted to, I just wanted to kind of share again how deliberate this process is, and that it is an opportunity for us to ask questions, other committees to ask questions, and then again at town meeting, when every citizen has, has a voice and a vote, but I just wanted to kind of explain it, and so.
And these are in our package, it's in the package, it's on the website, and then the actual book at town meeting lists all the budgets, comparison this year, last year, and the, you know, any changes, and that's on, you know, that's on, hopefully on the website for a few weeks before town meeting, and we also have a forum before town meeting where people can come and talk about them, people might get a little intimidated sometimes at town meeting, makes it easier, so there's lots of bites at the apple for people to weigh in on the budgets.
Great, I think that was just really helpful, just, just to know kind of what our role is.
Can I just add, I know we're, we're doing the accounting department right now, and certainly all the department heads do a lot of work on their budgets, but, you know, serving on FinCom before town council, I can attest to the fact that Kevin is involved in every single budget, and I do want to just acknowledge, Kevin, the work that you do, because none of this comes together without,
No.
you know, your guidance to the departments and, and all of your work answering difficult questions, so thank you for all of that. I mean, we're, we're doing your department, your department first, I think it's in first in alphabetical order, you know, we, we, I think those of us who've done this for a while know your hands are in all of this, and, and we're a better town for that.
Absolutely.
Completely agreed, I think it's good we start with, with your budget, Kevin, but I also wanted to highlight all the thought that goes into this, starting much earlier. Okay, do I have a motion on this?
Yes, move to approve the accounting budget for fiscal 2024 is presented.
Second, any discussion? And all in favor? Great, unanimous, seven zero. Moving on to the legal budget, legal department budget.
Yep, next budget is the legal budget, we're recommending that this budget be increased $3,722 over the current fiscal year. This increase is all in personal services, and this for a negotiated salary increase of 3%. Major expenses within this budget, we have an outside professional services line item of $60,000, which is used mainly for labor attorneys and other expert services as needed. We have a books and publications line item of $6,200, this is used for online legal services and to upkeep the town's hard copy of the legal library. The total budget request is $198,592.
Great, any questions for Kevin? Councillor Dubrowski?
Thank you, Kevin, the only question I have on that is with the contractual services being at $60,000 budgeted, and I realize that we're at 5289, it seems like we've had a lot of swings in years past relative to that. Has there been any thought given to whether the $60,000 is the appropriate placeholder, or if we should perhaps eke that down a bit?
Well.
I, I, it's kind of, it's kind of a crapshoot, if you look at the, the history of it.
It, it is, they, they, these expenses, they're all over the board, you know. Fortunately, this year, there, there are really no big outstanding legal issues going on within the town, so that's why the, the, the spend so far year-to-date has, has remained low, but it, it only takes one, one instance that, you know, that this budget could be spent in, in a week. But fortunately, we don't have any issues currently with that's going to happen.
Madam Chair, may I respond too? If, if it were virtually nothing but labor negotiation, it would be pretty easy to budget. It might vary from year to year, but on a predictable basis with the collective bargaining cycle. But it, it's more episodic than that, because we have, say, for example, the Butler Ave litigation, which blew a hole in the budget for years, we're still paying for that, because it's my budget that the engineers get paid out of, and they're still hard at work. When the town is sued for, tort, or a civil rights alleged violation, fortunately, we have insurance for that kind of thing, but the insurance policy has a provision that requires us to pay a deductible, that deductible comes out of my budget, and it's for every new case, so, and, and it's impossible to predict when we're going to be hit with any particular such case.
This seems like, out of any budget, the line item is probably the most unpredictable, save for maybe snow and ice.
Maybe snow and ice.
But even then, I think historically, we have a little.
We apply cred to this one, too.
Yeah.
I do, every night.
Yeah, exactly, all right.
And Kevin and, and Tom and Steve, what happens with the money in a, in a year where we don't use it all, it goes back to the?
Goes back to free cash, right, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Right, and, and you see that in your report at the November town meeting, where we close out the last year and it shows each line item, again, what wasn't expended, what maybe was carried over, and then what went back to free cash, so. It's, you know, I, I'm, I'm very comfortable with the $60,000, you know, a few years we've had reserve fund transfers, but this certainly, hopefully, looks like it's not one of them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes, move to approve the legal department budget for fiscal 2024 is presented.
Second, great, any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero, unanimous, thank you. Moving on to the tax collector department.
Yes, the tax collector's budget, we are recommending an increase to this budget of $6,998. That increase breaks down $5,488 to the tax levy, $1,510 to a water and sewer transfer. There is an increase in personal services of $2,488, and this is for contractual and negotiated increases. I do want to note, under personal services, we did reduce the overtime line item by $2,500 based on usage. Main expenses within this budget that we increased, the professional services line item, we increased $1,000. In the postage line item, we increased $2,000. Main expenses within this budget, there's a line item of $5,200 for printing and binding. This is used to print the preliminary and actual tax bills. Under professional services, a line item for $4,750. This is used for. This is used for instruments of taking during the tax final process. And the postage line item, thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars, which is used to mail approximately sixty-five thousand tax bills during the course of the year. The total budget request for fiscal twenty-four is three hundred and four thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars, with two hundred and forty-two thousand one twenty coming from tax levy, and sixty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars coming from a water and sewer transfer.
Thank you. Any questions? Counsel Tynes?
Just a question, Kevin. On the professional services line under contractual services, the thousand-dollar increase, can you speak a little bit about why that's increasing? Is that based on expected volume or is there something else happening there?
Sure. It's based on expected volume. The tax final process, we are, this expense we deal with would happen during the second half of the fiscal year, closer towards year end. If you look at the two prior years, fiscal twenty-one and twenty-two, the actual expenditures, we're right around between thirty-five hundred dollars. And we're anticipating an increase in cost to, with regards to the current fiscal year. So that's why we did bump that up a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel DeBroski?
I'd just say, I've previously talked to the tax, with the tax collector about the postage piece, because every year that goes up. And I understand why it's being done as it is now. But going forward, this is, you know, these bills are some of the few bills that I can think of that are still being mailed. And there are a lot of other, you know, almost anything now, you know, you're getting paperless. So I understand the rationale behind it, but I would like to see that, you know, going forward. You know, some way that we can, we can bring that more into the 21st century. Because that's a huge expense and it's also, I think, far less efficient for people who are now accustomed to getting all their paperless billing.
Counsel Tynes?
I recall, and Steve, you may remember better than I do, or Kevin, didn't we, we looked at this last year, I believe. And was there, I thought there was a statutory reason why we couldn't really bring that volume of paper down. I know, believe me, I entirely agree with Counsel DeBroski that, you know, if we could do it, I'd like to see us do it.
We'll continue to look at, I think there was also maybe software costs, but it was, it is something that's maddening that we have to do it that way.
There were several reasons that the tax collector, well articulated. So I'm, by no means faulting her for it, but it is something that generally we have to, and, you know, if there's something that has to be changed, more formally, that's a process that I think needs to happen at some point. Because we're in 2023 now and we're still spending thirty-four thousand dollars on postage.
Any other questions about the tax collection department? Okay, do I have a motion?
Yep, move to accept the tax department budget for fiscal year 2024 is presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to the assessors department.
The assessments budget for fiscal twenty-four, we are recommending a decrease of five thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. The decrease in personal services is seven thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars. The reason, this decrease does include contractual and negotiated increases. But it also includes the effect of the new intermunicipal agreement. The town of Wakefield does share the director of assessing with the town of Reading. And now we've also included Linfield in the mix. So by sharing the director of assessing services between three communities, we were able to reduce the personal services line item. Under contractual services, there is a small increase under professional services. The professional services line item of eighteen thousand six hundred is used for outside appraisal services and outside personal property services. Total budget request for fiscal twenty-four is two hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Great. Any questions? Counsel Tynes?
Sorry, just the same question on professional services. I assume that increase is volume-driven?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a?
And that is a, an expense that will be paid in the second half of the year.
Great, thank you.
Okay, looks like no more questions. Do I have a motion?
Yep, move to accept the assessing department budget for fiscal year 2024 as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye, seven zero. Great. Moving on to the town clerk budget.
Yes, the town clerk's budget, we are recommending an increase to this budget of four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The increase in personal services is two thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which is for negotiated and contractual increases. I want to point out, the town clerk's position does follow the supervisory scale. And under personal services, there are some savings due to a retirement in this office. On the expense portion of the budget, we did decrease professional services two thousand dollars. And we increased postage thirty-five hundred dollars, both of them based on usage. We also did reduce the dues and memberships by a hundred and forty dollars, which is also based on usage. Major expenses within this budget, the printing and binding line item, fourteen thousand dollars. This is used to print the town's bylaws, code books, dog licenses. And it's also used to buy old birth certificates, death certificates, and marriage certificates. The total budget request for fiscal twenty-four is two hundred and fifty-two thousand ninety-three dollars.
Thank you. Any questions? Counsel Tynes?
Thank you. Again, and I apologize, Kevin, I think I ask this every year. But as we look at the impact of increased usage of kind of mail-in voting for elections, does that fall into this budget or is that falling into the election expense budget?
It falls, it falls in both the election and the, I'm sorry, the election and registration and the town clerk's budget.
Okay.
The postage is pretty much, is sometimes interchangeable there. And there has been such a big increase in demand in the past couple of years. And anytime that there's anything to do with a presidential election, the postage does increase.
Does go up.
Quite a bit.
Okay, great. So that's sort of, so, you know, as we look at that postage increase, that we're really looking at effectively election-related, or probably election-related expenses by and large?
Correct.
Do we get reimbursement from the state? I thought they were covering postage.
We will be, on the elections, the state elections, we will, we, it's an unfunded mandate and we will get something back.
We will get something back.
Something. We will get something back.
And they also, they also help, they are supposed to be helping with like overtime for staffing.
That entire early voting.
But just for presidential?
Just for state.
Oh, just for state?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes, move to accept the town clerk's proposed budget for fiscal year 2024 as presented.
Second. Great. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero, great. Thank you. Moving on, Kevin, to the election and registration budget.
Yes, the election and registration, we are recommending an increase to this budget of three thousand dollars fiscal twenty-four. We increased the professional services line item two thousand dollars. In the postage line item by a thousand dollars. Both of these based on both current and prior year usage. Main expenses within this budget, under personal services, seventeen thousand one hundred dollars, which is for the census workings. Under contractual services, the professional services line item, twelve thousand dollars. We use an outside company called LHS. They come in and they help us with the census mailing, the printing of ballots, and also the maintenance of the voting machines. Postage, seventy-five hundred dollars, which is used for absentee ballots. Total budget request for fiscal twenty-four is forty thousand seven hundred dollars.
Great. Any questions? Counsel DeBroski?
I guess just part and parcel, we talked about having this unfunded mandate, basically unfunded mandate. I mean, Steve, I think we're getting like pennies on the dollar of what we're having to spend. It's not, it's not a hundred percent reimbursement.
Yeah, I haven't seen the number come back yet, but it never is.
No, it's nowhere near that.
In my experience, it has never been.
But I think also, if we're finding that voter, like voter habits are changing, does that also mean we should be reevaluating the day of staffing that we're doing going forward?
Yeah, I think we evaluate that. Our very capable town clerk does all the time. At the last election, was very busy at the polls as well, having been there a few times, so. Yeah, and she's evaluating all the time. I get the point.
Yeah, I mean, if we have some like fifty, say fifty percent of people who have voted before election day, then presumably, we're not going to have the same, you know, the same kind of demands, be it, you know, like staffing or whatever the case might be.
Exactly.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes, move to accept the election and registration budget for fiscal 2024 is presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, seven zero. Great. Election expense.
The election expense budget, we are requesting a decrease to this budget of eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars over the current fiscal year. The reason for this decrease is in fiscal twenty-four, we have two scheduled elections. In the current year that we're in now, fiscal twenty-three, we've had three scheduled elections. So there's one scheduled election less next fiscal year. Main expenses within this budget, the election workers, thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. That includes the wardens, the clerks, and the tellers. The advertising line item with seventy-five hundred dollars. And the care of booths, which is the setting up and taking down of the voting booths at the voting locations, sixty-six hundred dollars. Total budget request for fiscal twenty-four is twenty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Any questions for Kevin? Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes, move to accept the election expense budget for fiscal 2024 as proposed, presented.
Second. Great. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, seven zero. Great. The finance committee.
Finance committee budget for fiscal twenty-four, we're recommending level funding.
Kevin, I think you hit mute. Or the Wi-Fi in your part of Wakefield is not great.
Is it working now?
It's a little choppy, but yes.
There you go.
That's good.
That's better.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. The finance committee budget, we're recommending level funding fiscal twenty-four. I do note that we did, we reduced office supplies two hundred dollars and we increased dues and memberships, two hundred dollars for a net zero. Main expenses within this budget, the cost to print the town's recommendation, recommendation book, which is used at Town Meeting, twenty-eight hundred dollars in the dues and memberships line item. That's for the MMA of thirty-six hundred dollars. The total budget request is seven thousand sixty dollars.
Great. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Move to accept the finance committee budget for fiscal year 2024 is presented.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Great. Moving on to the conservation commission budget.
Conservation commission budget fiscal twenty-four, we're recommending an increase of ten thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars. This increase is all in personal services and is for contractual and negotiated increases. And it also includes an increase in hours from twenty hours a week to twenty-four hours a week. So there's a twenty percent increase based on the number of hours per week. We also have a budget offset of four thousand five hundred dollars from wetland filing fees. Main expenses within this budget, the travel expense, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is used for seminars and training. Hopefully, they'll be able to use some of that this year, where it's been limited due to COVID. Total budget request for fiscal twenty-four is fifty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars, with fifty-five thousand thirty-one coming from tax levy and four thousand five hundred dollars coming from available funds.
Great. Any questions? Counsel DeBroski?
Kevin or, I guess, Steve, what is, what is the basis for increasing to the twenty-four hours from the twenty?
Increased filings, increased complication of filings, also working on the open space plan. So increased work in the office.
What, so how, how was that determined, that twenty-four is, four more hours is needed or eight, I guess?
We felt that was, four hours a week was enough on it. We did, definitely wanted to keep both employees below the threshold for health insurance or benefits as well. So four hours seemed to be reasonable.
So are we seeing discernible increases in workload?
Yeah, that's why. That's why they came to me.
Like, we're seeing like.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah. They came saying they couldn't, they couldn't keep up with the work on the twenty hours.
Counsel Tynes?
Covered my question.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Yep, move to accept the conservation commission budget for fiscal year 2024 as presented.
Second. Great. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, seven zero. Great. The budget of the planning board.
The planning board budget for fiscal twenty-four, we are recommending level funding. We did move some money around within this budget. We increased the advertising line item, thousand dollars. We increased travel, a hundred dollars. In the office supplies, six hundred and forty dollars. We decreased books and publications by one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars for a net zero effect. The decrease in books and publication, we, the planning office was using a subscription to a co-star realty, which they use for a period of about a year. And they no longer feel like it's worth the cost. So that's, that was the reason for reducing books and publications. We did leave some money in that line item for them to revisit, to see if there's some other alternative source that they would like to use. Main expenses within this budget, the cost of the clerk, forty-eight hundred dollars, which is twenty-four meetings, two meetings a month, two hundred dollars each. The advertising line item, three thousand dollars, which is used to advertise the meetings and by law changes. Total budget request for fiscal twenty-four is twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Move to accept the planning board budget for fiscal year 2024 as presented.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero. Great. Board, Board of Appeals.
The Board of Appeals budget for fiscal twenty-four, we are recommending an increase to this budget of twenty-five hundred dollars. This increases for the Board of Appeals clerk due to the large volume of work that is done in this office. Main expenses within this budget is the cost to basically put on their hearings, which includes advertising, the cost of the clerk, the Board of Appeals chairman, board members get forty dollars for hearing. We do collect revenue in this department. And usually, the revenues that are collected during the year cover the cost of this budget. Fiscal year-to-date, for fiscal twenty-three, we've collected over twenty-five thousand dollars. The total budget request for fiscal twenty-four is thirty thousand three hundred dollars.
Great. Any questions? Counsel Tynes?
Just maybe an observation, and Mr. Gill, please correct me if I'm wrong. But I, I believe the stipend that the board members receive is per hearing, even if that hearing lasts like months and months and months and months.
Yeah, that is correct.
Just for folks of the public to know, I mean, you know, a board member gets ten dollars per hearing, but that hearing may represent, I mean, literally, I mean, dozens and dozens and dozens of hours of work, if not hundreds.
That's correct.
It's incredibly lucrative.
Well, well below.
And, and to clarify, that is a state statute. That is not something that.
No.
The town council decided, yes, but, yeah, big moneymaker side hustle.
No, it's not statute, it's just been tradition.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Yep, uh, move to accept the Board of Appeals budget for fiscal year 2024 is presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, seven zero, great. And the final budget of the evening, Council on Aging.
Yes, the Council on Aging budget, we are recommending an increase to this budget for fiscal '24 of $11,389. The increase in personal services is $11,364, which includes contractual and negotiated increases. There is some savings. Uh, we have a new Council on Aging director, Karen Burke. Uh, she took over for Judy Guzziano. Uh, so there is some savings with her salary where she is at a, a lower step than what Judy was at. The outreach worker, we reduced the budgeted hours. She, she was budgeted for 15 hours a week. Uh, and in reality, the, the past few years, she's only been working 12. So there was a little bit of a cushion in that budget. So we, we actually reduced the budgeted hours to the actual hours that she's working. So there were some savings there. Uh, but the main increase, um, is, um, Ca- Karen would like to add an additional hot time van driver, up to 14 hours a week. Um, that's why that line item was increased. Talking with Karen, and she, she's basically said that the demand for these van rides has exploded the past several months. Um, and there's been one or two occasions where she hasn't been able to, um, provide that service. And from the numbers that she's seeing, she, she's seeing that, um, demand probably continue to increase. So that, that's the, uh, big driver here was the, um, the additional hours for the van drivers. There also was a small increase in the food line item, uh, based on inflation. Main expenses within this budget, the oil and additives line item, which is gas for the senior van. And the Mystic Valley Services, which is used for meals on wheels and in-home care, $6,275. Total budget request for fiscal '24 is $258,689.
Any questions? Uh, Council Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first of all, I'm pleased to see that the Council of Aging recognizes the, um, the demands for these services and has asked for additional, um, money for van drivers. I also just want to take one moment to thank Mr. Gill for spending time with me today and answering a lot of my questions about the budget. Um, I recognize that everybody in the room is in AP Calculus and I'm in basic algebra. And I appreciate the fact that Mr. Gill has volunteered to be my algebra teacher.
Uh, Council McLean? I just, I'm laughing because I hated AP Calculus, so.
Well, if you go into accounting, you can avoid it. I did. Um, the, more by way of comment, Madam Chair, than, uh, questions. Um, just wanted to make sure that, you know, my lack of questions is not misinterpreted as a lack of interest. Any deviations or significant deviations that I thought needed to be addressed, and they were small. Um, I've already run by the town administrator and the town accountant by email to save a little bit of time on these smaller budgets. But I'd like to say, as I have said to the town administrator, that I'm very pleased with these opening set of budgets. And I hope, and I think some folks may think that honest budgeting is an oxymoron, but I, I think that this is an honest, a display of honest budgeting. I can see that line items have been looked at. Things that are not needed have been discarded. Um, other items that need to be increased have been increased. Uh, and altogether, I'm very pleased with these budgets and I hope that the remainder of the, uh, departments in town, realizing of course that 1.96 is not the likely outcome of every budget, but that all the departments will, will take a good look, uh, as did these budgets, uh, on their budgeting process and, and come up with the numbers that they need. And neither more nor less as much as one can do in budget. Thank you.
Um, I, let me respond to that and then Council Jowarski. I, I actually, I, always so thoughtful, you meeting with department heads and departments and getting the feedback. And I think it's really important for us to hear that more seniors are asking for, for rides. Um, I know I spoke to, to Karen over the summer and they had a trip somewhere planned and it was booked. Like she actually was looking for another, um, vehicle, another van. And so I think that's also really helpful. And so this is, once we move a little past the budget, Steve, I'd love to actually have kind of, the, the people that do, uh, almost the social services, you know, so, um, the librarian, uh, you know, uh, recreation department, um, Karen, kind of come in and talk about now that we're kind of moved out of pandemic, what services they're seeing, um, where it would be helpful to kind of, um, collaborate and kind of, you know, what, what they're seeing. So I, that's also appreciated as we talk about the budget, because if there's people wanting more services, I want to make sure that we have, you know, the correct vehicles, the correct drivers, all of that to provide those services. Council Jowarski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, one line item that, that stuck out to me was Mystic Valley Elder Services, and that, that has been, um, flat for the last several years and, and it's not a bad thing, certainly. But I'm just curious as to why it is that, that that is able to stay at a 6275 each year. Do, do we, is it, is there a state?
It's subsidized by the state.
The component, is that, is that what keeps it steady?
Exactly.
Okay. We can maybe use some more of those for some other.
Exactly.
And Mystic Valley Elder Services is again a great partner. They actually help out a lot of families and seniors in our town, so, um, yeah, that's a, it's a great service. And they, they help a lot of towns, so. But good question. Anything else? Okay, do I have a motion?
Uh, move to accept the Council on Aging budget for fiscal year 2024 as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, thank you so much, that was unanimous. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
We'll see you in our next meeting.
And many after that.
Yes.
Bye, Kevin.
Have a good day.
You too.
Um, okay, moving on, item seven, um, 2023 renewal licenses.
Uh, move to approve the license renewals for 2023 as presented in the packet.
Second. Great. Um, and all in favor? I, I didn't do discussion, any discuss? Seven zero, all great. Um, did we do both of them?
I think so.
Okay, just making sure we can do that.
Yeah, just for clarity, the motion was for the whole slate.
Yes, great. Um, item eight, liquor license.
Uh, Madam Chair, move to approve a request for a one-day liquor license for Wakefield High School Boys Hockey Fundraising Event at the Maricopa Civic Center on February 24th.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, seven zero, great. Item nine, warrants. Um, Council Vincent, do we have an update on the warrants?
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. Um, warrant number 20 is 6.162 million. Most of those expenses were group insurance, which was approximately 1.4 million, and the light department, which was 2.3 million dollars. Warrant 22 was 3.3 million. The most significant thing there was town council, 1.1 million dollars. I did ask Mr. Gill how the town council had 1.1 million dollars. And it was the capitals, I mean, the public safety building, the capital projects for the public safety building. That's all, man.
I thought it was a year-end bonus of staff.
Do we not get paid per meeting as well? Uh, thank you, Council, uh, Vincent on that. Um, item 10, donations.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, move to accept and expend a gift or gifts in the amount of $780 to the Council on Aging from various donors with thanks.
Second. Great, um, all in favor? Aye, seven zero.
Move to, uh, accept and expend a gift or gifts in the amount of $75 to the fire department in the memory of Frank and Grace Piccolo with thanks.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Aye, seven zero.
Uh, and, uh, move to accept and expend a gift or gifts in the amount of $40 to the Wakefield Human Rights Commission from various donors with thanks.
Second. Great, and all in favor? Seven zero, great. Um, item 11, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to appro- uh, approve the December 12th, 2022 town council meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Great, all in favor? Seven zero, great. And do I have a motion to approve the December 22nd, 2022 town council meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. And all in favor? Seven zero, great. Item 12, announcements. Council Chines?
Uh, well, we approved the warrant for it today, but I, I just want to, um, you know, highlight the, the town meeting, special town meeting coming up on January 28th. Um, you know, this is, uh, the, the proposed high school is obviously a big project for the town. It has, you know, very significant, um, you know, impacts to the education our, our children receive really for decades and decades to come. Uh, obviously, it's a very expensive project as well, so really encourage everyone to come to town meeting, uh, and, and participate in that discussion. I think it's really important to have good representation there. Uh, and, and to that end, uh, there will be another community info session about the high school project, uh, the Saturday before that, Saturday, January 21st, uh, at 10:00 AM on Zoom. So really encourage people to, uh, participate in that as well and, uh, learn what you can about the project. Uh, and then just wanted to mention, I will have office hours, uh, next week, next Wednesday, from 5:37 over at the library. So come along, come along and say hi.
Great, uh, anyone else? Uh, Council Jowarski?
Um, I, I wanted to first wish everyone a happy new year. Looking forward to great things happening in, in our town in 2023. I think we have a lot of exciting opportunities going forward. Um, I also wanted to mention, because it, it was, it fell just before our last meeting on the 22nd, although that really wasn't a real, real long meeting. But, um, the Boys and Girls Club did a tremendous job with the Santa sleigh ride again this year. Um, and it was great to see so many families, um, with just genuine expressions of gratitude and appreciation uh, for the, the, the Christ, the Christmases and the holidays that were able to be provided, um, to members of our community. Um, I, I was glad to be a part of it, along with, um, Council Chines and, and pulling the sled. I think we did a phenomenal job of, of making sure that Santa made his way through the, through the streets of Wakefield. And, um, it was just really nice to see the community come, come together in that way. And I know that there were some last-minute glitches where some, some families were in need. And as always, the Boys and Girls Club came through, as they always do. And so I'm, I'm really proud to be a part of their work, um, but more importantly, I'm, I'm, I'm proud of their work. So I thank them for that. Thank you.
I also add to that, just a thanks to the Wakefield Police Department, too.
Well, absolutely.
For making that all happen, making sure we didn't get, you know, hit by cars as we were pulling the sleigh down the street. But, you know, there were a few police officers that spent some time on that as well. And I, I think really added to the event, both from a safety standpoint, but I think also a lot of the families really enjoyed seeing them and getting to meet them.
And on that, we, it's also today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So with that, I want to certainly thank, um, the dedicated men and women of, of our department who just do exceptional, outstanding work, be it guiding sleighs or making sure that, you know, that, that, that we're safe, um, in our community. So, so thank you for all the work that, that our, our team at, at the Public Safety Building does every single day, um, but especially today. I want to recognize them. Thank you.
Council Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, it's that time of the year where high school seniors can be applying to colleges and also looking about how to pay for colleges. There's two local organizations that have scholarships that are available. The Sons and Daughters of Italy of Wakefield have two $1,000 scholarships, um, that are available. And the Mystic Runners Running Club also is going to have 2,000, $1,000 scholarships that are going to be available to, um, high school seniors. You can go to their websites to find out the requirements to apply for those scholarships and the deadlines. Although I think this, the, the Sons and Daughters of Italy deadline is mid-February, so you'll have to act on that one quickly. The only other thing I want to say on a personal note is I'm wearing a purple tie that does not necessarily go with my sports jacket. And the reason for that is my 83-year-old father is a proud graduate of Texas Christian University, which is a school of 12,000 students who impressively tonight is playing for the national title in college football. So to honor my dad and his, um, his PhD from Texas Christian University, I'm wearing purple because that is the colors of the Texas Christian University horn frogs. Thank you.
Well, we will end quickly so you can get home to watch the game.
I'm wearing a purple tie too, but that wasn't intentional. Good luck to Texas Christian.
Great, uh, Council Smith Galvin?
Um, so we found out right before the holidays that Wakefield was granted the Green Communities status. So thanks to everybody on this group who's been a part of that. I mean, it's really been a, a community-wide effort, the Environmental Sustainability Committee, the Light and Dark, um, Light and Gas Department. So, um, we still have some, you know, I, I actually haven't seen the final letter. Uh, it, it comes with some grant funding, so we'll have details on that. Um, but it's very exciting and, and I think it's interesting timing, too, because, uh, as you may recall from looking at our energy, um, assessment that we had to do as part of it, building a new high school would really move us significantly forward, um, in reducing energy consumption and increasing our environmental, um, stewardship in town. So I think it's, hopefully things are coming together.
Uh, Council Denny?
Yes, I wanted to remind everybody that February 1st at 6:30 PM will be our final master plan public meeting. And it's going to be, include, uh, public facility, town services, infrastructure, economic and community development. It is going to be via Zoom. And, um, I hope that a lot of people attend and because we want to hear from as many people as possible and have as much input. Um, it's going to be, the master plan is something that's going to be guiding our community, so, uh, we want everybody involved. So hope to see you there. Uh, the Zoom information, uh, will be available shortly and will be on the website if it is not already there. But, um, stay tuned for that.
Thank you. Um, Sherrier Tom, anything to add?
No.
All set?
I'm all set, thank you.
All set, Steve?
I would hate to keep Council Vincent away from the game, so I'm not saying anything.
Just two quick announcements from me. Hope to see everyone at Monday's, um, the HRC event to celebrate, um, MLK and Coretta Scott King, 10 o'clock at the Galvin. And then just for my fellow counselors, um, as we're talking about budget and departments, um, I think, um, I will ask that our next, at our next meeting, um, we get another round of liaison updates. So if you wouldn't mind just reaching out to your groups and your people and we'll, we'll include that on next agenda. Um, item 13, matters not anticipated for the agenda? Nothing? And so item 14, adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, second, all in favor? Say aye, aye, unanimous. Thank you all. Our next council meeting will be Monday, January 23rd at, uh, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.